Hi guys, thanks for joining back with us here. I'm going to get us started on our next session. You should now be able to see the slide deck for our average income test panel. And I'm just going to pull my notes up here to get some housekeeping things out of the way and we will hand it off and get us started. Okay, so. Welcome everyone. I hope you just enjoyed Coffee and Bagel, spent some time meeting other attendees. We appreciate your involvement there. We'll be randomly selecting one participant to win a $50 Starbucks gift card. The winner will be receiving an email from us in just a few minutes, so please be on the lookout for that. At the end of the day, we will announce all the Coffee and Bagel winners on the conference platform homepage. So thanks again. The session you have just joined is our Average Income Test Special Session, AIT Special Session, which is a panel and will be presented by Kelly and Cynthia's at ProLink Solutions. And she is our Senior Product Manager for ProLink HFA. She will serve as our moderator. As well as Erica Ederling of Virginia Housing. We have Bailey Chambers of Mercy Housing and Matt Luna from Yardi. Thank you guys all for being here. We're looking forward to it. Before we get started here, I'd like to take just a few minutes to cover those housekeeping items again. We do have, you know, new people and attendees joining each of these sessions. So we will be doing some housekeeping at the beginning of each one of our sessions over the next couple of days. So first, just another reminder, on the right-hand side of your screen, you have access to that chat feature. This particular session is live. And while Kelly and the panelists are focused on the presentation, we do have Sarah Supranaut, who is our Customer Success Rep and Trainer at ProLink. She'll be moderating the chat throughout the session and sharing questions or comments that need to be kind of built into the discussion right now. So please feel free to post any of those questions or comments throughout the session. We'll incorporate them. Sarah will either be responding directly to you in real time or follow up with you after the session as well if it's more appropriate. And please note that your posts are visible to attendees, to everybody who's logged in. Okay, also on the right side of your screen, you have access to that poll feature. So throughout this session, we have three poll questions planned and they will be displayed one by one. You will have the poll questions posted for about 30 seconds and after which they'll close. So you'll be able to see the poll results once those answers have been posted. So basically 30 seconds, you'll see the question, you'll have 30 seconds to participate, respond, and then we'll post those answers on the next slide about 30 seconds later. We encourage you to participate in that as well. And then another just quick highlight, you can see on the screen, this is where you can download the copies of materials used in the session on the session page of the attendee hub. You can download it at any time before, during, or after the session. And then we also wanted to inform you that we are offering sessions from, sorry, from the previous, we're offering sessions from the previous Technology Live Conference on Demand this year. If you scroll down on the conference platform homepage, you'll see those playlists and individual sessions for both ProLink Tech Live 2021 and 2022. These sessions are more HFA relevant and supplemental to our live session. So if there's anything there that you would like to take advantage of and review, you are welcome to do that. And without further ado, I will introduce the session speaker, Kelly and Cynthia's. She's our moderator. She's our HFA Product Manager, as I mentioned before, has been with ProLink for 17 years. And I'm sure many of you have interacted with Kelly over the years. Kelly, you can share your screen now and please take it away with your panelists. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bree. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Bree, will you confirm for me that you can see my screen? Okay, I've got the agenda?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So a little agenda here and then we'll go ahead and dive right in. So we'll do some introductions. Then we'll hear from Erica Ederling of Virginia Housing, followed by Bailey Chambers from Mercy Housing. Next up, we'll hear from Matt Luna of Yardi Systems. And then finally myself, I'll do a little live demo of some of the updates that we've done to our software for the AIT program. So let's go ahead and dive in. Introductions first. Like I said, we're joined by Erica Ederling of Virginia Housing. Erica's been in the industry for over 25 years. I won't read this whole intro. It'll be available in the slide deck. But we welcome Erica. Thank you for joining us today, Erica, again from Virginia Housing. Next, we have Bailey Chambers. Bailey comes to us with Mercy Housing. She's been in the industry for 10 years. And so she's going to share some perspective for us from the viewpoint of a nonprofit. So thank you, Bailey. Welcome. Next up, we have Matt Luna. Matt has been in the industry for 12 years. He comes to us with Yardi. Matt will be sharing with us some of the updates that he's seen within his particular agencies, his company's software. And then finally myself, Bree did an introduction. You all probably kind of know me a little bit anyways. I've been around for a while, active with ProLink and particularly in this kind of multifamily setting. So let's go ahead and dive right in. Erica is up first with us this morning. Again, Erica from Virginia Housing. And so Erica, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to you. And you let me know as you need me to advance your slides.
Awesome. Good morning, everyone. And thank you for joining us today. We're going to talk about that dreaded average income or income averaging, or however you want to say it. But believe it or not, it's been five and a half years since we found out about it. And Stockton Williams talked a lot about, you know, what NCSHA has done to support the agencies in trying to wrap our brains around AIT and how it could work for us in having consistent practices. One thing that stands out for me of what he mentioned is that even though it's been in place for over five years, it still seems so brand new because we've had a lot to happen within the last five-year period. But what you see on this screen is just a summary of what was going on with the proposed rule. From an agency perspective, when we first found out about AIT, we were like, what is this thing? We think it could be great, but we just don't know. And one thing that stood out for us was that it, there was no bright line of everything that happens after the law went into place. No, it was effective for projects that were already in existence, had been allocated, had been constructed. They just had not completed part two of the 8609. And so there was a lot of movement on the agency part to try to figure out how it would work in real time. So please keep in mind, we, we're not the experts. We were learning at the same time, all of our partners were learning at the, about AIT. But March 2018, we all found out about it and then we had to do the deep dive and figure out for our agency. We opened up our doors, we talked with our partners and we could see where expanding their, their option on the allocation application would be beneficial, especially for those rehab projects with returning residents where they may have had incomes that were above 60 but below 80. And so we were able to help them with that. And so that's what happened in 2018. 2019, we did update our QAP so that it would allow for the other option of average income test. And we had all kinds of rules related to that. We wanted the unit designations to be spread out. We wanted them to float. We said no more qualified contract. We said, we certainly want you to choose line 8B yes for multiple building project and have 100% low-income properties. And so those were some asks that we put together at the very beginning that we felt would be beneficial first for compliance monitoring on the agency side, but certainly property operations, being able to manage the tax credit program with those. It's just a lot easier to manage the tax credit program with those requirements. And then in October 2020, we were like, okay, we've never seen the IRS work so hard or so fast to get us some written guidance. And then we said, oh no, what is this? And so in December 2020, our agency was one of the many, many partners who submitted written rebuttals to the proposed guidance because it just did not work. It just did not work. It was not operational. We, we thought that we had put together a really awesome plan that would work for our partners. But honestly, it, it created a lot of just not happiness about it. And so we had a lot of partners to pull out of using average income until we received the final rule. But April 2021 is important because that was the first time that we had participated in a public hearing where we got to speak to the IRS and to Treasury about why we felt changes needed to happen with proposed rule. And if we can go to the next slide. And so when we finally got the final rule, we were like, they really listened to us. This is something that we can actually work with. What Stockton mentioned about NCSHA and its task force coming together to try to figure out, you know, best practices and everything. We feel like what's in the final rule absolutely works for us. But there are a lot of things that were put in there that we didn't have to actively report on or actively have to work with under 2050 and 4060. And so we were happy that, you know, we still had the designations between 20 and 80. The requirement is, is occupied by qualified income households, has to be rent restricted, and then annually identifying and reporting a qualified group of units. And so anyone who's been in the affordable industry for more than, you know, 10 minutes, you recognize, we love our acronyms. And so average income gave us several more acronyms to learn about and to speak about. And so now we have AIT with the Average Income Test and we have qualified group of units that now the agency has to know what that means and what it should look like for them in monitoring. And then our project owners and our portfolio partners, they have to know what that means as well in order to maintain compliance with Average Income Test. Next slide. So we've had a full year of Average Income Test and the requirements and having properties implementing their lease-up practices and making sure their applicable fraction is done by the end of the calendar year. A lot of those things that I've mentioned to you, they're not different from 2050 and 4060. They are exactly the same. The only difference is that properties with the Average Income Test have to confirm that they have 40% or more of their units that are leased to qualified households between 20 and 80%. That they are rent restricted, that they, that they meet that income designation and that that group averages 60% and that that is going on as of 1231 in that particular calendar year or taxable year. So that's why software is so vitally important. Yes, we did create a workaround at the end of 2022 because we wanted to see how that would look. How would our partners report to us? So we went to the trusty Excel spreadsheet and we know we love Excel spreadsheets. But, but we said you use readily available resources and you can print out a report that tells us the tenant demographic information and what designation that was chosen and show to us that it averaged. And you can also tell us if, if a unit needed to be removed because the average may have gone over. To go over the proposed rule and the difference in the final rule, one of the biggest issues was the CLIF test. And it's called CLIF because if one unit happened to be over income or there was some other non-compliance and it skewed the average over 60%, then it disqualified the project. Well, that doesn't happen under 2050 and 4060. And we certainly didn't want to monitor our properties in that manner in Virginia. And so, you know, we've tried to always have an open door and talk through any specific property issues that are going on so that that does not happen. And so we wanted to do the same, even though the annual reporting is not required until, until the, for, for the 2023 calendar year. We did have it in place for 2022 just to see what it would look like. Next slide. And so what we ask is that our owners designate their units before move in. We know that properties in operation as they're leasing up, they have all kinds of plans on, you know, they're going to have a 30% unit on the basement floor. They're going to have a 70% unit up in the upper corner on the third floor. But our population, they certainly tell the property owners and operators where they would want to live. And we would expect the same under AIT. And so having a, a plan of how many that they want to designate at each of those set-asides, that's very important. But actually assigning a unit a income limitation before you have a qualified applicant, that's something that we certainly don't encourage because in operations, it just generally does not work. And then as I've mentioned before, the annually identifying, reporting that qualified group of units. And they need to make sure that they're meeting their applicable fraction, which is what we put in our extended use agreement that goes 30-plus years. And then they need to make sure that for each of the projects, as defined by line 8B on the 8609, that they are meeting that minimum set-aside for AIT, that at least a minimum of 40% of the units are averaging 60%. And then those excluded units, and those would be any units that are not included. That could be units that are down due to casualty loss. That could be units where the owner has identified a certain level of non-compliance. And if it's in non-compliance as of 1231, then there's an expectation that those units would be excluded. But for the most part, the majority and a very high percentage of properties would still be able to meet the minimum set-aside under AIT and then redesignating units. That's so important because we want our properties to know if you find the non-compliance and then you can redesignate a unit, then you do that before we come out and we do our compliance monitoring visit. And so we just asked that our properties are actively updating our online tenant monitoring system. And then of course, we have additional questions and reporting requirements in our owner annual certification at the end of the year. Next slide. And so this goes over changing unit designations. We do not want to approve those unit designations before we conduct our compliance monitoring visit. We feel like our properties have the autonomy to conduct their own due diligence in maintaining their project compliance. We do have an open door. They should call us if they have those hypothetical questions that they want to ask about different non-compliance issues so that they can address those things before we get out. But we want the unit to be changed as needed. And sometimes that could mean that you have a change in occupancy where maybe they need to go to a lower income designation for a long-term resident. Or you have someone that's added to a household and maybe you want to change the designation there. They're all different types of changes, but we've asked our portfolio partners to make sure that they have written guidance on when a change would occur so that they can be very consistent as they manage the different requests for changing unit designations. Next slide. And this is my last slide, but I thought it was important to be able to share this graphic. As I started, the last five years, we've had a lot going on. And Average Income Test and Average Income, Income Averaging, all of those things, they were the key words before we heard Inspire and HOTMA, which are going to be the buzzwords, of course, for a lot of agencies within the next few months and years to come. But we've lived through a lot of what we felt were really significant changes. 2008 stands out to me. Certainly changes in the utility allowances and what options were available. We had Average Income Test. And then we have AIT, Inspire, and HOTMA. And so it is a new thing that we have in our, in our wheelhouse and we're going to learn and we're going to grow. We're very fortunate in Virginia to have a partnership with ProLink and a software system that listens to us and understands the needs of, you know, the agencies and monitoring the program requirements. And they are changing in real time for our software providers too. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thanks, Erica. Thank you very much. Next up, folks, we have a poll question. So we're going to open the poll now for this particular poll question. It'll be open for 30 seconds. Does your agency offer AIT in its Litec program currently? So go ahead and answer that poll question. Like I said, we've got about 30 seconds. And I'll try to time this appropriately. Okay, Sam, I think 30 seconds has passed, so please go ahead and close the poll question and post the results for us. Okay, it looks like we have some results there. So it looks like we've got about 94% of our attendees who do have AIT and about 6% who don't. So thank you for participating in that poll question. So next up, we have Bailey Chambers with us from Mercy Housing. And I am going to go ahead, Bailey, and ask you to turn on your camera and then I'll turn over the session to you and I'll control your slides for you. So take it away, Bailey.
Thank you. And thank you, Erica, for that very informational presentation. Good morning and afternoon to everybody depending on where you're located. My name is Bailey Chambers and I work as a Software Operations Manager with Mercy Housing. So I create properties and once I assist with properties maintaining their set-aside requirements and then continued compliance. To do this, I work closely with developers, site staff, and the RealPage implementation team to review regulatory agreements, the setup in the software based on the information provided. So I'm here to share the site team's perspective and some experiences that we've either had or been a part of or even just heard about. It's pretty great because a lot of Erica's presentation is exactly how we feel. As I've said before in a previous presentation, we appreciate that these new AIT policies were nothing like the new HOTMA regulations. In 2018 was the first time that we saw average income election. And we felt the same way about the initial release as we do about the new regulations. It seemed like it was going to be a great option that would allow some households to earn as much as 80% AMI until we started getting into the ongoing compliance phase of each project. And that's where most of the program's issues started to make many of us worry and like really concerned about the ongoing compliance that was for the years to come. Before, we couldn't float set-asides. And once the household moved into a specific AMI, the unit stayed at that AMI level for as long as the program was effective. In the affordable realm, there's other concerns, like there are not a lot of households that could afford the 80% rent limits. And so we were finding ourselves needing to change rents to a lower AMI to properly take care of our residents instead of maximizing our rent potentials for these sites. And even in the initial stage, many applicants do not understand the impact of their response on applications or even just the smallest amount of income that they're reporting. So that led to bigger issues with households becoming over income or not qualifying for the anticipated AMI move-in and figuring that out after the fact. And then our sites felt that they were not given any kind of options to resolve this. So that may not be a problem specifically with just average income. But what is specific is that there was no room for these type of complications because there was no true path to resolution. On a deeper level, than just the monitoring of compliance, there were and still are some misinterpretations of the agreements and how income averaging properties should function. Now, I don't know if anybody else has experienced this or even seen it when reviewing agreements. But there were several regulatory agreements before 2018 that referenced average income in different sense than how we see it now with the average income being a set-aside election. And so let me tell you, that was super confusing. I even spoke with one company where they had a property operating as average income until they received 8609, which we all know can take six months to a year after the lease-up before we even receive it. And turns out they were not income average or average income. That's important. I even mentioned that later, average income. So now nothing was off with their set-asides because luckily the program didn't have such major changes, again, like the HOTMA regulations with how the households were qualified. So because of that and the fact that they followed the outline of how many of the units were set forth in the agreements, so certain amount of AMI, certain unit specifications at each AMI. They were looking for that transition from thinking they were average income into a traditional Litec. But they did have to have future conversations with the state agency because it wasn't just them who thought that they were average income. But when the agreements and everything came out and the property was placed in service, technically, average income didn't exist. So it just goes to show how easily a difference in opinion or the perception of terms outlined in an agreement can alter the future operations of an entire property. Something as little as the same type of terminology from an agency's 2017 agreements to the 2018 agreements with average income election. And it was missed by all of the site staff, first-year auditors from the state agency, development, sophomore team, etc. It was, it was a big concern. Can we go to the next slide, please? Now that we've had a few years of practice with properties operating as average income, we are starting to see the other issues of the interpretation, such as opinions of how these agreements are structured and exactly how we follow up on the compliance long-term. So we've had a few agencies tell us that the initial setup, which I don't know if a lot of people have seen in agreement, but a lot of the times they have like an exhibit B or a chart that tells you X amount of units at Y AMI. So some of these agencies have told us that the AMI will forever match the layout presented in the regulatory agreement. And all we have to do is maintain that format for the duration of the compliance period. Other agencies have told us that the same setup is only for initial lease-up. And after, because of the new regulations, you can move anybody around as long as that's an available AMI to select from. As long as the overall property's AMI is below the average percent of 60%. The most recent option or opinion that we've heard and are still verifying with a certain state agency is that the average income is exactly that. It's the average income of the project and that agreement provides an option, but not a requirement for how the site can achieve that average set-aside percentage. When they send somebody out for their first-year audit, they're not going to care if we have X amount of units at Y AMI because they'll only care about that overall average and we're allowed to make these moves as we deem necessary. Some of these opinions, not the last one, but some of them can also stem into a deeper idea that there's really no long-term compliance issues because of just how if we provide, if we follow the setup that was provided, the site can just stay leased up at, at that AMI forever. Or we can just lease out to a completely lower AMIs as long as the average property is below a certain percent. And so we never have to actually lease out to the higher AMI percents. So there's still a lot of things we have to figure out and it's going to take some time. I mean, we are several years in from 2018, but we are only one year into the new regulations. So there's still a few kinks and in all honesty, Mercy didn't have too many average income properties. We are starting to expand a little bit, but we didn't have too many experiences going into it. So a lot of this is what we've heard from others that have had that election. Since all I've had to say so far is slightly a little more negative, I'd like to focus on some positive highlights that we've seen since the new regulations have been released. The 2022 Average Income Regulations appear to be a genuine attempt to have average income properties function more like a traditional Litec property and to offer solutions for typical compliance issues such as over-income households or transferring other, transferring residents to another unit, whether it be for an RAR or any other reason that was necessary. Plus, right as we're starting to have a lot of questions and a lot, a lot of worries about the program's compliance, especially with the over-income and those things fixed designations, the new regulations started addressing some of those concerns and it, it provided a lot of relief. We were getting to a point where we had a lot of our site staff calling and they're like, oh, we don't know what to do. And then these came out and they're like, okay, we got it. It's great. So the, the next step is that our software, and I'm sure everybody's got some amazing updates, but our software on site came out with ways to make the long-term compliance monitoring such, such an easier process. They did away or in the process of doing away with their simple violation messages that appeared to be the only real software change that came with the program since we already had a way to track X number of units at fixed AMIs. But they also incorporated new widgets to provide images of where the property is at with achieving their average income requirements and then provided the ability to drill down even more to get as much information as we needed. Since it's not one of their conferences, I got some permission to share a few snips of the widgets, but I didn't want to overstep or overshare their product. So we are limited to the few items I have on the screen. They do tell us that there are more updates coming on December 9th. And with what we have from the widget, we're really excited to see what they have in store for us. As for the regulations. As for the regulations, they are starting to make flow charts on how to handle specific situations since there are so many different changes with them. And they are extremely helpful and they're making life a lot easier. Next slide, please. Now, I actually pulled these charts from Novogradic, but anybody can Google them and read on the detailed information that they provide behind each chart. These charts were extremely helpful for me when I was setting up properties, reviewing agreements, and also helping existing properties correct any kind of set-asides or monitor some ongoing compliance. I also wanted to make sure that I provided this information, so if anybody else needs to kind of help charts, I'm a visual person, so seeing these, it's just good to spread the word. Another very helpful training that I took was Zephyr On-Demand Average Income Training where they seem to touch on a key point that it is not income averaging, it is average income, as I said it as income averaging earlier. It doesn't seem like it's that big of a point to mention, but since I've shared the misunderstanding of regulations and the agreements, I think it's also important to emphasize the comments such as this one. These can make a huge difference in the future of our properties and with the future site staff as several people have completed this training and they've shared that their understanding of average income has grown because before, when it first came out, they thought it was the average of the household's income and not the average of the property. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. And I always feel like I'm talking too much about myself, so my presentation's a little short. But to wrap up, Mercy is really excited for these policies and we're expanding our scope of properties to use the average income into territories such as like Colorado, Nebraska, Georgia, and many more. We still foresee possible complications with ongoing compliance, but have not had enough time to really monitor the impacts of the updated regulations. They do bring a little more hope to the table and we look forward to learning from our upcoming properties that use this election as well as hearing from others and their experiences. Thank you all for listening. I'd like to pass the floor now to Matt.
Thank you, Bailey. Next up, we have Matt Luna from Yardi Systems, so Matt, I'm going to go ahead and let you take it away. Let me know when you need me to advance your slides.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, welcome, everybody. As mentioned, my name is Matt Luna. I'm with Yardi Systems in the Affordable Business Unit. Been with the company now, this is my twelfth year, and specializing with compliance in any kind of form, whether it's LIHTC 59, anything rule development related. We want to talk a little bit about some of the software impact that we have and sort of some of the changes that have come about and how we have to approach those from the software side. And it's actually kind of fun, in my opinion. We have these government regulations that we have to program for and all these nice reports and kind of talking with our clients and saying, "Okay, what's your policies and procedures? How do we develop a software solution that will help you?" And it's an ever-evolving, ever-evolving piece, right? And so when we approached this and we were talking with the IRS, federal government, state agencies, clients, it came very apparent to us that we need to make three major changes that I want to talk about. There are some additional changes on the minor side just for workflow purposes, but what I want to talk about here is three major changes that kind of have an impact for you on a much larger scale, right? And so one of those items here that we want to talk about is being able to track your compliance. So that's number one is updating the existing reports that we have for these average income test projects. The next piece is that when we are redesignating our income restrictions or our unit mapping for our set-asides, there are some changes and reasons for those changes that need to be also tracked. And then lastly as well, there is the ability now to add or remove specific units from your applicable fraction or your set-aside groups. So that also has come into play as well. So those are some of those, that flexibility that we were talking about earlier, which is, it sounds great, it's wonderful, but how do we keep track of all of this, right? Over the course of time, these projects are going to be around for ten years, fifteen years, so there has to be some scalability in what we deliver to clients. So we're going to talk a little bit about that as well and some of the, as you know, there's that first step, which is really, okay, we have our project, first year, second year, everything's great, but what about like historical reporting, right? After five years, ten years? So we'll talk a little bit about those pieces. Kelly, do you want to advance the next slide? So we have some screenshots here and so Bailey also kind of mentioned there's some limitations on how much I can show you from the software side. There's some legal hurdles there that we need to clear, but here are some screenshots that we have. So those of you who may be familiar with Yardi Voyager already, I'm showing our map income restriction screen on the screenshot. Those of you who are not familiar with the product, this is where you would come in to set either your set-aside mappings for an apartment, so mark it at a fifty percent or sixty percent. And what we've done is we've made two updates to this. I think we made the update about last year or so. Is at the very top, they're sort of in the middle-ish, is we give you a project average income summary. So you're able to see your maximum average. So hey, we want to keep everything on an average of sixty percent. What you're currently averaging at, so if you're above that, below that, or right at sixty percent. And then the target average, the target average is actually that column right below it. It's any sort of proposed changes, so you can see that real-time as you're making your changes and redesignating units or swapping some designations. Am I going to be staying under that maximum average of sixty percent, let's say? And then we will give you a warning that says, "Hey, if you make these changes, you're going to go over." So there is that warning that we have for you as well. So that's really, really nice on a kind of a live perspective of this is, "Oh, all right." You know, I don't want to make that change because it's going to put me out of compliance. The next piece to this that we've added in is the change reason. And there is a set list already that we have. So when you go to make the change to your unit mapping or your income restriction, whatever lingo you use, we now will be required to input a change reason. And so there's already a set list, we're using the federal list that was published. If your state does create a standard list that's a little bit different, we will also be able to publish those as well for you so we can have those changed dynamically based off of which state your project is in. The other piece to the puzzle too is these are also editable, so you can kind of customize them. We do kind of warn clients a little bit, "Hey, you want to stay within the federal limits there, but just in case you have those options as well." So those are some of the changes there, especially when tracking those changes to your target income, the ability to be able to track, "Am I staying in compliance in real-time?" And then also, of course, with some of the new changes that have come about, the change reason piece. You can go ahead, Kelly, the next slide, please. The next one is probably one of the bigger challenges for clients is it's great that we're able to now group these units so that some are now available for reporting against compliance and others we can remove from those groups. But keeping track of all of that grouping is a bit of a challenge for clients in keeping track of all of those. So what we've come up with is a new function which allows you to group units a part of your applicable fraction or also and/or also the set-aside group. Okay, and so again, at the very top, you're going to have some live reporting there. So as you're making these designated changes, you're able to see those reports there or those tables at the top update in real-time. So your project average income summary, that first table there, you're going to have your federal election, so the forty-sixty rule. And then we have three other reports that we are looking at. So you're all qualified units, so right now my occupancy fraction's not looking great, I'm at fifteen percent and my average income is at sixty-six point six seven percent, so we're not looking great there. The next piece though is your applicable fraction group. So the applicable fraction group is going to be all of the units that at the very bottom there at the table that are selected. So I don't have any selected right now, so these is going to be at zero. But as I check those boxes, you're going to see the occupancy fraction average income then start to update for you. And then the last one is the set-aside group, so that's the last column at the very bottom there checking those boxes as well. And you're able to add those or remove those from the set-aside group down below. So pretty simplistic, this screen here is quite simplistic in what you can do. It's the reporting though that we want to get at and that live reporting that I keep talking about, which is, "Hey, if I make these changes, am I going to be in compliance or out of compliance? I don't want to be out of compliance, I want my software to be able to stop me from doing anything I'm not supposed to." The next table over to the right of the project income summary is your building average income. And this is for your first-year applicable fractions. This is going to be set at a building by building. So for building A, B, and C, you can see we have different first-year applicable fractions. You'll have your occupancy by unit and also your square footage as well. So this particular rule uses the square footage that you need to be in compliance with where the set-aside grouping does not include square footage as well. So you'll be able to get that as you update to make sure that you're staying in compliance. And then the last piece to this function is at the very bottom. We're going to give you some information about your buildings, your units, square footages, if this apartment is occupied, move-in AMI percentages and current AMI percentages. And then you also have your mapping, so if you have a set-aside or an income restriction mapped at sixty, eighty, you'll be able to see those and then that will allow you to make a decision on "Do I want to include this unit in my applicable fraction group?" So if so, you can check that box or leave it unchecked if you don't want it to be grouped in. And then you can also select the set-aside group. Now, I don't know if you can tell here, but the set-aside group checkboxes are grayed out. They only become active when you check the applicable fraction. So in order to be in the set-aside group, you have to be a part of the applicable fraction group. You can't be in the set-aside group without being in the applicable fraction group. So that part we know, so we've made that very apparent there for our clients and their staff. That's all we have there for the average income grouping. If you want to go to the next slide, Kelly, for me. So the next item here is the major, major question that every client always asks is, "I want a report that just shows me if I'm in compliance or out of compliance. What am I need to do to fix this? What do I not need to do to fix this?" I want everything kind of summarized on one screen where I can do some additional research. And that's our compliance monitor report. It's an interactive report a little bit. And you're able to get a lot of information here. We kind of summarize those screens that we were just showing in the previous slides kind of here to show you everything that you really need. So at the top, we're going to give you the qualified units, your applicable fraction group and your set-aside group. So you have those three levels of reporting that you can get after there and say, "Okay, am I passing or am I failing?" So you can see I have twenty apartments at this property. There are three compliant and they're all qualified, but there's no units associated with the applicable fraction group or the set-aside group. You'll have your occupancy percentages and your income percentages. And then, of course, the column that everybody kind of locks in on is, "Am I passing or am I failing?" So failing, that's not good, right? We want to be able to see a pass there. The next thing too, that's super important to this is the ability to say, "Okay, we have these groupings, but when were they effective?" That is a super important piece when we've been talking to clients is because the ability to add or subtract units from a grouping, we need to know when we did that. So that's going to change our compliance monitor. So maybe February, prior to February first of 2023, our groupings were different in those regards. So that's super, super important there. We'll also give you warnings too, so no average income test unit reporting groups have been selected. So we'll let you know, "Hey, you're failing because this has just not been set up." So that's also nice as well. So you do get that transparency, that clarity, that can sometimes cause confusions as well. And then at the very bottom, this is the compliance monitor. You'll see at the very, very far right, it is color-coded. So you'll get a red if you're failing and a green if you're passing, so green is good and red is bad. But I want to lock in on those three columns that I have highlighted there, which is the average income restriction. So you will be able to get your income restrictions on this report. And then also the checkboxes, the applicable fraction box in the set-aside group. You'll be able to see those checked to say, "Okay, this unit is a part of the applicable fraction group and/or a part of the set-aside group as well." So you'll be able to get those transparencies as well. So this is really, really nice. You can also, those are hyperlinks there as well to the residents, so you can take a look at the residence screen, look at their certification stack. We also have their move-in and AMI percentages and current AMI percentages and current income. If they're over income, you'll also be able to see that designation as well. And so that really kind of is your key when looking at this to kind of lock in to say, "Okay, what type of decisions do I need to make? Do I need to require a remapping of my income restriction or my set-asides? Do I need to add or remove any units from my applicable fraction group and/or my set-aside group?" So you're able to kind of analyze this and take a look at those pieces. Okay, and then I do have one more slide, Kelly, for everybody. And the last one, and this is again, one that I want to stress the most, is when we've been talking to clients when we've released this, is the ability to track all of this history. There's going to be a lot of history that's involved, so how do we report against that? And within each unit, there is a history table, so we keep track of each individual unit's history. And as you make those changes on the average income change reasons, the income restriction, the mapping into a particular fraction group or an applicable fraction group or set-aside group, we're keeping track of all of that behind the scenes so that if you pull up reports for prior year to the state, you have all accurate reporting as well. So having that ability to track all of that history is super important to clients for compliance purposes as well, so that's super, super important to have these items as well. Kelly, that's all I have from the software side. I'll hand it off to you.
Great, thanks, Matt. Thank you very much. Next up, folks, we have a poll question, our second poll question here. So we're going to go ahead and open that up. Sam, please open up that poll question for everybody. You'll have thirty seconds to answer the poll question. And the second question is, "Does your agency have any AIT properties that are currently in monitoring and compliance?" So Sam, go ahead and open that up. And you'll have about thirty seconds to answer that question. Okay, Sam, I think thirty seconds has passed, so please go ahead and close that poll question and post the results for us. Okay, Sam's got the results here for us. So for our second poll question, "Do you have any AIT properties currently in monitoring or in compliance?" Eighty-one percent of our respondents indicate yes, that they do have items in monitoring and compliance with seventeen percent saying no. So that means that a lot of us are thinking about and dealing with these properties, not just kind of in that front end, but already into compliance and really having to deal with these true compliance regulations and the reporting requirements. So with that, everybody, let's go ahead and dive into my section here. And like I said, I am going to go ahead and go live into the system and show some of the updates that we have pushed even all the way out to production today. So please know that each of the screens- So please know that each of the screens that I'm gonna be showing you live, they are included here in the slide deck, um, but I'm gonna move away from this slide deck and go live in the system. So um, you will have those though for reference as you need those. So, um, here I am, you can see that, um, I'm positioned here in my ProLink HFA demo site. I'm in my production site. Now I'm gonna be timed out, so I'm gonna go ahead and click, um, on my menu option there so that, um, I refresh and get logged in. Um, again, note that, um, I am using single sign-on, so you're not gonna see the login page for me to get logged back in. You'll see a little bit of a flash there, um, with single sign-on logging me back in, but we're not gonna see um, the login page. So the first item that I really want us to take a look at, um, and focus on today um, is the average income, um, configuration setting that you're gonna need to turn on um, within your environment. And you're gonna wanna do this in, you know, both your U A T and your production environment. So, um, this configuration setting, you can see I've got it here listed on the screen. Um, the setting name is show average income functionality. You're gonna need to set this to true in order for this A I T functionality to appear um, both within ProLink HFA and with Proquorum for you. So, you know, just wanna remind everybody to um, you know, make a mental note that, um, you do need to get that config setting updated. Um, particularly when you're really ready to start getting going in production um, with using the A I T functionality, okay, in your monitoring and your compliance. The next item that I want to, um, look at and give some focus to is the idea that there are a couple of security privileges, okay? Um, these are gonna need to be set up, um, and selected. Um, you know, for your security roles, for your folks that are gonna be doing um, your A I T monitoring and compliance. So you can see um, here I clicked into my security role screen. Now remember, um, you know, many of you based on your role within your agency and how you use ProLink HFA, you likely won't have access to this admin panel that I'm accessing here. Um, you know, this is kind of saved for your administrator type people within your organization. Um, and that's okay, um, you know, but I do want you to have the idea, um, about what does need to be done kind of behind the scenes in order to kind of turn this functionality on for you to be able to use. So here I've accessed a particular security role. And so I'm scrolling down to where I can see um, these new security privileges that have been included for A I T. So when, you know, we add new functionality like this, and so you can see kind of middle screen here. Here are my um, A I T security privileges. When we add new functionality to the system like this, these security privileges, they're gonna be present, um, you know, within your environment. But the default is that they're unselected, okay? So, um, you know, just remember that you'll need to ask, you know, your ProLink administrators to go ahead and give you, um, the access at least for edit um, for the A I T functionality. Probably not a lot of folks need the delete, maybe only a few. Um, but you know, most of you, if not all of you, are gonna need this edit security privilege. Okay, so again, just, um, you know, little reminders to plant, um, in your brains to, you know, remind your administrators that you're gonna need the config setting turned on um, and the security privilege selected for you. And remember, you wanna do that again in both your A I T and your production environments, okay? So once you get those items, um, you know, turned on, set up, you're gonna be ready to go. You're gonna be ready to start working on A I T. So let's go ahead and take a look first, um, at the changes that we see in Proquorum within the tenant portal. Um, so in order to access that tenant portal, I am gonna go ahead and first navigate to, um, my favorite property for A I T. And then I'm gonna access my work center right through my property within ProLink HFA. So you can see I did a system search there. I found my property. I went ahead and clicked on my property. So now I'm positioned here at my property overview with all of my property, um, options available there in my left navigation menu. And so in my upper infobox here at the left, I have that access to my work center. So I can go ahead and click on that primary work center. I do need to log in because I'm not logged in yet to Proquorum today. Um, so let me get logged in there. And then I'm gonna go directly into my Lee Summit, um, work center. Okay, so here I'm positioned, you know, just kind of at the the top or the home of my work center. So now I can go ahead and select my tenant income certification menu option here. This is gonna take me into my portal, okay? So then, as we access our portal, immediately on our compliance periods list screen, we're gonna see the first of our changes here for A I T. And that is our average income unit designations area here presented right at the top of our compliance periods list screen. And of course, we have our change A I T unit designations button, okay? So this is the first of our A I T changes that, you know, our partners, our owner agents are gonna see. So I'm gonna go ahead and click into my change A I T unit designations button. And I'll see that the system then takes me into, um, really a list screen, right? This is a, a screen of all the designations for my particular property that I'm looking at. So this is giving me bin by bin or building by building, um, what designations I have, unit by unit for each one of my buildings or my bins. And of course, if I happen to have a building bin here that had no, um, designations currently set up at all, this grid for that particular building would be empty. Um, in this example, I filled in, um, you know, all of my buildings just so we had lots of data to look at. Um, but again, this is kind of our first list screen, um, our first update for A I T that we see within the portal now. Remember, um, you know, of course, this is exactly what your owner agency is. And this is exactly what you see when you access the portal for a given property. The thing that I wanna remind everybody about is that yes, this looks like a lot of data, and that's because it is, it is a lot of data. Um, but remember that your owner agents have options about how they enter this data into the tenant portal. Um, you know, some of your properties may be accessing and entering this data manually right here in the portal. Um, other of your owner agents, your partners are gonna be using that NAMA X amount, okay? To push this data, um, into the system. So you know, yes, it is a lot of information potentially that you're collecting for a given property. Um, but remember that we do have that NAMA XML to lean on um, to bring this data into the system, particularly hopefully for those larger properties, okay? Um, so let's go ahead and just take a look at, um, each of these um, different screens that we do have available for these A I Ts designations. So you saw I clicked into that building one, my unit one oh one. I then access, um, kind of another list screen that gives me the options to work on. Unit designations, set aside group, um, or applicable fraction group. So like we kind of see, um, you know, kind of standard functionality within our portal. We have a button for each one of these lists that we can add new records. We can add a new unit designation, a new qualified group or set aside group and a new applicable fraction group. Um, clicking those buttons will take me to a, a, a new blank edit screen. I also can click on a row um, for an existing, um, data record here. So when I click into that unit designation, I see of course what that designation is, right? Twenty through eighty excluded and market, the effective date, um, and then that change reason. And you'll notice, um, that my list of change reasons matches what Matt had in his list of change reasons. And that is very, um, very planned, very specific. That list is, is, um, dictated by our NAMA XML group. And so, you know, that's all of the software vendors coming together and planning that out and making sure that, um, we agree and that we're all sharing that same information. So that, that communication is strong and solid. So I just wanted to point that out for everybody. Um, and then of course, you've got the ability to add a comment around the unit designation. Remember, um, within the Proquorum tenant portal, these fields that have the red sidebar at the left of the field, that means that those fields are required. So in order to be able to save this record, you have to enter those fields that are marked with that red side sidebar, okay? Um, so let me return back to my list screen. Let's hop in and take a look at our set aside group now via our portal. So, um, you know, kind of same look and feel here. We've got, um, is the unit that we're considering part of the qualified group or the set aside group, yes or no? And then that effective date, okay? And then a comment as well. Again, comment is not required. Um, but can be entered here manually or submitted via the XML. And then finally, we take a look at our applicable fraction group edit screen. Looks very similar, almost identical to our set aside, um, or qualified group. Again, with the yes, no, is this part of the applicable fraction group and then that effective date? And then the opportunity there for a comment, okay? Um, so again, as we, as we look to, um, these screens that we're seeing here um, within the portal, you know, again, some of your owner agents may be entering this data manually. Others may be submitting this detail, um, through XML, okay? So let's turn our focus now back to ProLink HFA. And let's take a look at the same, um, changes, the same enhancements um, within ProLink HFA or, um, within our back office. So the first thing that I really wanna highlight here, um, returning back into ProLink HFA is that you'll recall that within our bins screens, right? Within our particular property that we're working on. Um, when we do access those bins, remember we have that federal minimum set aside election for average income. So you're going to need for your bin or bins within a given property to have that average income election, okay? That's a very important, um, key feature here to kind of make this A I T functionality um, truly work within the system. So now that election has been there for some time. That's not brand new within the system. Um, but definitely something that you're gonna wanna check and confirm um, as you're kind of moving into monitoring, um, and wanting to start compliance for these particular um, A I T properties that might be in your portfolio. Um, I wanna remind you as well, um, if you do have multi-building projects in some of your properties, you'll make that average income, um, set aside election on that multi-building project definition. So as you click into that multi-building project screen, you can see, um, you'll need to have that average income, uh, minimum set aside elected there as well in the case of the multi-building project, okay? So now let's go ahead and take a look at those similar screens, um, in our units um, within ProLink HFA that we saw in our Proquorum tenant portal. So as I click into that units menu option there in my property, I can click into a given unit just by clicking on a row there in the screen. I will then be navigated to my units screen. And I can see that now I have this brand new A I T, A I T designations tab appearing on my unit, okay? Let me caution everybody, um. There are a couple of things that are gonna help this tab show up or not show up within the system. That config setting that we talked about, okay? That's gonna help whether or not this tab is gonna show up. And then also within each given property, selecting that average income minimum set aside on my bin or my multi-building project records is also gonna help control whether or not I see this A I T designations tab, okay? So if you have a property where you believe you should be seeing this tab and you're not seeing it, please check both of those spots, your config setting and then your federal minimum set aside selected on either your bin or your multi-building project, okay? So as I select this tab on my unit, I can see here now, this is looking very much like what I see in my Proquorum tenant portal, right? And remember, we kind of, anything compliance related, anything where we're working with those partners, those owner agents, we try to make your experience in your back office, in your ProLink HFA, um, as identical as it can be to what your partners are experiencing in the portal. It just makes it easier for everybody to work together and understand what's going on, okay? So again, we have the listing, we've got the A I T unit designations, we've got our set aside groups, we've got our applicable fraction group. And, um, you know, just like what we see in our portal, we've got our buttons here at the upper right where we can add a new unit designation. We can add a new set aside group, we can add a new applicable fraction group. Now obviously, because this is data that is submitted to your agency from your owner agents, you know, you all as asset managers or as compliance officers are not going to be, you know, adding new records, um, you know, at a high volume, right? You shouldn't be. This is, this should be data that you're collecting, right, from the owner agent. However, we all know that there are sometimes special case scenarios. And so you may use these buttons to add new records here and there, once in a great while, sometimes where you need to. So they are available. As I click into these screens, I can start with the unit designation. It looks exactly like the screen that we see um, in the tenant portal, right? It's got, we choose that designation. We enter the effective date, we choose that change reason, and then we've got that opportunity there for that comment. Again, you as the allocating agency are likely not going to be entering or even modifying this data really very much at all. But know that it's there, know that you can access it and review it, okay? Um, same, uh, same screens that we see for, um, our set aside group and our fraction group. Um, I'm not gonna click into those screens today. I do have those included in the slide deck for you. Um, just because of time, um, I wanna scoot forward here, um, and have the chance to show you the new data views that are coming along um, with these new edit screens. So I can go ahead and click into my data views panel here. Um, and then I'm going to be looking for my unit designations, my set aside group, my applicable fraction group data views within my portfolio properties, um, section or folder within my data view. So you can see I've got my property, portfolio property section expanded here. And here I can see I've got applicable fraction group, qualified unit group and my designation. So let's hop into our unit designations and just take a look. Um, again, I'm looking here at my default view, um, just, you know, what's provided to me with a brand new data view. Um, I have grouped my data view by my HFA. I have grouped my data view by my HFA number. But remember that I can always use my view manager, excuse me, to create other needed views, include more columns of detail, you know, maybe about the building, the unit itself, in addition to the actual unit designation and effective date, okay? And just like all of our other data views, these are row clicks. So, you know, if I click into a row, I'm going to head into unit one oh seven, right into the A I T designation record for that unit one oh seven, okay? Just like A I T designations, I've also got my qualified group of units data view. Again, I have this, I'm in my default view here. I did group by my HFA number. Now, what we're looking at today, right, for for this example property of my lease summit, you know, this is really just twenty twenty-three information that I've created for my particular property. But, you know, just imagine over time, as the years go forward, and we're monitoring these A I T properties and collecting this data. Of course, we're going to see these rows of data just increase and increase and increase as the years go forward, right? We will, particularly with the qualified or set aside group and the applicable fraction group, right? We have to report these annually, right? So we're going to have these records every year over year. Now, in terms of unit designations, we may not see records in unit designations for every year because units may not change, right? So but just imagine that these particular data views are going to grow and grow for you over time as you're collecting that data, okay? And then really quickly, I just want to take a quick second here and highlight for you the actual truly compliance review updates that are actually coming to your U A T environment next week. This is going to include a new Litech A I T tab. You're going to see new missing requirements. You're going to see exception, oops, exception message updates, income rent and available unit rule testing. And updates to your applicable fraction grid for your A I T fields and calculations. So one more quick poll question before I turn it over to three. Sam, get ready. So poll question number three here, have you tried out the A I T functionality in your ProLink HFA U A T environment? So Sam, go ahead and open that up for us for thirty seconds before we collect answers there. I should have the the, what is it, Jeopardy music playing, right, for the poll questions?
We should.
Okay, we're just about coming up on our thirty seconds here. Okay, Sam, I think we're at thirty seconds, so go ahead and please close that poll and post those answers for us. Looks like we've got those. So of our participants today, nobody right now has tried out the functionality in your U A T environment. So guys, you need to get in there. Oh, there we go. We've got a little update. We've got somebody has tried it out. So guys, you got to get ready because this, we've got more updates coming to your U A T environment, in fact, next Wednesday. So get in there and give this stuff a try and holler at us with questions. Okay, I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Kelly. You guys can hear me. I'm going to go ahead and steal the screen back for just a brief moment before we break again. Okay, so now you can see my screen. Again, thank you, Kelly, very much for moderating. And then Erica, Matt, and Bailey, we appreciate your participation in this panel and discussion about A I T. Thanks, everyone who joined. I hope you got some value out of this session. As a reminder, there is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation available under resources. So I'm just sharing that right now on the screen where to find resources on your left hand, sorry, your right-hand panel. And then you can come back and view the recording of this session for ninety days logging into Cvent. There is a survey option also available for you. So please take, like, if you have any feedback or questions, comments, or any advice that you have or thoughts on A I T, please submit them in that survey, and we will take it seriously and follow up with you as we need to with that. And then now we're headed into our break, so we're going to take the next fifteen minutes until one forty-five P M Eastern to join Coffee and Bagel. This is a feature highlighting that we're really just trying to highlight in our conferences here to encourage interactions amongst attendees. When you click the discussions item under community on the top menu, the top menu option, you will find rooms set up that you can join. Each room can accommodate six people, and you're able to create your own room and have others join if you prefer to do that. Please meet and greet each other until the next session, which is Litech and Home Compliance Refresher. That's going to be featuring Sarah Supernat, who is our customer success rep and trainer for ProLink Solutions. Again, that session will begin at one forty-five P M Eastern. Coffee and Bagel will take place at the break until that point. And we will pick a winner for a fifty dollar gift card at the end of this Coffee and Bagel session. So please participate if you'd like to potentially win a gift card to that and enjoy the break. We'll see you soon. Thank you.